Good evening. Welcome to the January 22, 2024 Gorham Planning Board Meeting. Tonight, we have a two-item agenda. The first item is a public hearing. Contract Zone KV Enterprises LLC, Robey Street subdivision. Item two is a discussion sketch plan. Gen X Capital Partners LLC, Luxury Motor Toys. We have the roll call, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hager.
You first.
Here.
Mr. Delaney.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Present.
Mr. Frank.
Present.
Mr. Benson.
Here.
Mr. Burrows.
Here.
Mr. Russ.
Present. Looks like we have all seven members here this evening. First item is Chairman's Report. I do not have a Chairman's Report this evening. Second item, Committees Reports, Committee Reports. And first one, Ordinance Review Committee. Is there a report this evening?
Nothing new since the last meeting.
Thank you. And Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee?
Nothing new.
Thank you. And next spot is for Administrative Review Report?
Nothing to report.
Nothing. Not much to say tonight, I guess. So, we will go right to the item one, which is a public hearing. Contract Zone KV Enterprises LLC, Robey Street subdivision. That's a request for approval of a contract zone to allow for construction of a residential subdivision with single-family, multifamily, mixed use in conservation land. That's map 24 lots 19, 20, map 25 lot 8, map 27 lot 20. And that's zoned urban residential expansion. And the applicant is represented by, not Sean Frank this evening, but Owens McCullough from Sebago Technics.
We come as a team.
We will start with some background from planning?
Generally speaking, you've seen this several times. This, in particular, this evening, is a public hearing for the contract zone only. The subdivision and site plan elements we will review again in February when that part of the process comes back before you. But tonight, we're focused on the contract zoning language that you have. It's been amended, as you've requested, and our town attorney has added to and made a couple of corrections for us. And she is here this evening if you have any questions that she can help with. With that, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you. And we will open it up for the applicant?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Owens McCullough, civil engineer with Sebago Technics, here tonight on behalf of KV Enterprises. With me from KV Enterprises is Vincent Maeta and Kendrick Ballantyne, in case there are any questions of them. We've been before you a few different times, been through the council several times. I think the last meeting provided some really good substantive conversation about some of the language in the contract zone. Natalie, the town's council, provided some feedback and conversation about it. Since that time, those modifications have been made to the contract language. Natalie had a couple of other text edits that were done just, I think, today. We've seen them, they're fine. Had to do with multi-tenant versus multifamily and how it's worded in the ordinance. So, fine with that, we want to be consistent with the ordinance. So, I think we're fine with those modifications that have been made into the language. I'm more than happy to go back through the project and the details, but everybody's seen it, so I'll defer to the board if you want me to, how far you want me to go back through everything. I can go individually through each of the items in the contract zone, or if every, I guess I'll defer to you.
I think, I think that's fine for now, unless anyone else from the board wants to hear anything? No? No, I think the big thing is it's a public hearing, so.
Sure.
Yep. We'll open it up to the public, as long as you're good for now.
I'm good for now.
All right.
Thank you.
So, with that, we will commence the public hearing portion, and welcome anyone from the public to step up to the podium. And as usual, state your name and address, and, you know, address the board. And let's just remember, we're here to discuss the contract zone, so if we can all stay on task, that will be good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm Virginia Wilder-Cross, and I live at 11 Bramblewood Lane. And I'm here to speak against this contract zone right now. We've spent a lot of time over the past several months going back and forth about whether or not a contract zone is a good idea for the Robey Street development plan. As I see it, a contract is a compatible agreement between involved parties. In this case, it's KV Enterprises and the Town of Gorham. KV Enterprises is proposing a massive new mini-town without regard to the residents in the existing neighborhoods, without concern for increased traffic on already congested streets, without regard for increased taxes necessary to meet the educational needs. KV Enterprises is selling us the idea that they will make Gorham better by rapidly building 391 dwelling units over the next few years, and to further sell us on the idea that they're promising to preserve acres of land for outdoor recreation. That's land that isn't suitable for development anyway. I've spoken here more than once that I am in favor of density in the village area. I stand by that. However, I want to see the density occur with a compatible growth plan that, at the very least, considers the neighbors, the roads, and the taxed impact. KV Enterprises reminded us that current zoning allows them to do what they want. And if we don't approve the contract zone, they have threatened us to do what they want, whatever that is. Is that a way to reach a compatible agreement? I don't think so. So, I'm appealing to the planning board not to support this contract zone as has been proposed. Thank you.
Rich Dillon, 9 Bramblewood Lane. The guiding documents for an approval are the comprehensive plan and the land and use code. The applicant will say, "We meet those requirements, so you need to approve the project." I say, "There is other language in those documents that I would like to read some excerpts from that are designed to protect residents in existing neighborhoods." One, page 36, chapter 5, section A, "The town's land use regulations should accommodate continued residential development in the community, but the amount of new construction should be regularly monitored to assure the growth does not outpace the town's ability to provide services and facilities to meet the needs of an expanding population." Point two, page 40, chapter 5, section D, under "Local Objectives," this, I think, is the most important one, "to minimize the impact of vehicular traffic on established residential neighborhoods." Bramblewood, Robey, White Birch, Ridgeway, all established neighborhoods. I'd like to know how that is going to be addressed. Point three, page 41, "Traffic in Residential Neighborhoods." "The town should continue to encourage/require the development of a pattern of interconnected local streets where that is feasible while, at the same time, discouraging the use of local residential streets as shortcuts for commuter and similar through traffic, including assuring that the design of new streets does not encourage short cutting through residential neighborhoods. The town should work with established residential neighborhoods that are experiencing significant cut through traffic to improve the situation." Why wait until that happens and then have to address it after? Something has, can be done beforehand to prevent that. Bramblewood zoning is classified as urban residential. The road was designated urban access and built to those standards. Wouldn't this development in its size and configuration require reclassification as an urban sub-collector? It connects to artery 114. There's a substantial amount of homes going into there. Would that be reclassified if so? Bramblewood is 22 feet wide, not 24 feet wide as required by sub-collector standards. The Gorham Connector is planned to start maybe in about three years is the estimate. It's expected to take three years to complete. Trip generation data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers uses 10 trips per day for single-family homes, seven trips per day for apartments/condos. Right now, Bramblewood has seven single-family homes, six apartment/condos. Based on that calculation, it's 112 vehicles a day currently going through there. The planning level, capacity of a road to the ITE, two-lane local street, 1,000 vehicles today, with the proposed 96 single-family and 295 apartments/condos, using that same information, that number skyrockets to 3,025 vehicles per day. Okay, this may be, this Bramblewood, Robey, maybe White Birch, I don't think you can just divide by three to say, "Well, it meets the 1,000." But that's a substantial amount of increased traffic through that neighborhood. Has a traffic study been performed? Is it going to be performed? That land for that development has 500 feet of frontage on New Portland Road. Why can't a new dedicated road built to code, designed to handle that traffic, be built directly to that main artery? That's all I have. Thank you.
My name is Almira Martin, and I live on 9 Bramblewood Lane with my family. My family and I bought a house on Bramblewood Lane less than two years ago. As you may remember, it was a very competitive real estate market here in Maine during that time, so we ended up paying a lot of money for our house. But nevertheless, we love our house, and we love the neighborhood we live in. We have had no regrets up until we found out about this development that could significantly impact our lives. When we were looking for a house, it was very important to us to be on a quiet street in a small, quiet neighborhood. Being on a quiet street was at the top of our priority list. We knew that we would have paid at least $50,000 less for our house, for a similar house on a busy road, if we didn't mind living on a busy road, but we did. As you can see, learning about this development, which could potentially turn our street into a busy road with heavy construction vehicles going up and down our street for eight years or more, has been absolutely devastating to us. We are confident this development would drastically decrease the quality of our life, as well as the value of our house. This is not what we signed up for, and this is not where we wanted to live when we bought our house. We've been following, closely following the meetings and the discussions surrounding this development, and it has been absolutely frustrating to watch. Multiple people from the impacted neighborhoods have spoken up and expressed similar concerns about the traffic, heavy construction vehicles, and the impact this could have on our communities. But so far, we haven't really heard any of our concerns being addressed or even acknowledged. There has been a lot of conversation, however, about this future development itself and what it would look like, with the possibility for a park and the trail systems. So, what I'm trying to say is that you have been discussing the quality of life for this future neighborhood, which is great, by the way, but we are already here. We already live in these established neighborhoods, and no one seems to be addressing the quality of our lives and how this could impact us. We do understand, we don't understand, actually, why our street has to be connected to this development, and no one really has explained it to us. So, please, we want to understand why it has to be connected. And if it does, and if it is going to be connected, how you are going to, what are you going to do to minimize the impact on our neighborhoods? At the minimum, we do not want our streets being used and abused by heavy construction vehicles. Who knows for how long? Would you, if you lived on one of those streets? So far, we haven't heard anything yet. No solutions, no compromise. That's why it's been so upsetting to us. It feels as if our concerns don't matter. We don't matter. And this development is going to happen in the way you want it to happen, in the way that is the most convenient and beneficial to the developer. So, I would like to end by asking the planning board this question. What is the purpose of these public hearings if our concerns are not being considered or addressed? Not just one person's concern, multiple people with the same concern. Thank you.
Charles Kelly, 55, New Portland Road, Gorham. Guess I was a little confused because we're going to address the plan at a different meeting, and this is just for the contract zone agreement. There's a couple points on the contract zone agreement. Because the plan keeps changing, every time I come in here, there's the lot sizes or the phasing of it, and that, the first or the second, let's see, 1, 2, 3, the third, whereas, it refers to the plan. When you're referring to the plan, which one is it? What date is it? It would be better to say, "Other than improvements as contemplated by the plan or as directed by the town." And then there's another whereas, for the high-density development. Someplace, somebody has mentioned in one of the previous meetings that the high-density development should not apply to this particular tract of land because it's landlocked. And so, we're now going to open it up to different streets that weren't made for this property. They were designed at a different time and date. The roads are too narrow, they don't have sidewalks, they don't have the bearing capacity to take the loads of these large trucks. So, for that one, I think we should use what some of the staff members have said, instead of whereas the property is located within the growth area identified as the town's comprehensive plan and encourages and promotes high-density residential development. I'd rather see whereas the development will protect the character of the existing neighborhoods, just like the staff notes had suggested before, will protect the character of the existing neighborhoods, because this plan is not doing that. It's adversely affecting all the neighborhoods. That's why we are all here, voicing our opinions against this plan. And we, I'd also like to not see permission be given to White Birch Lane access. All these streets, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to look at it, they're all going to be through streets. People are going to, that's a shortcut. You want to get from Route 114 to Route 25, you go through the ball field, over, hit Johnson Road, and you're on Route 25. They're designed to be through streets. I don't care what type of, you want to put speed bumps, what do they call, bump outs, traffic is still going to go. Whatever your phone says, oh, this is a shortcut for me. I'll cut through the ball field, and now I have a quarter-mile drag to get out to New Portland Road. New Portland Road's one of the busiest streets in town, and we're going to dump more traffic onto it? Doesn't make any sense. So, I'd like to see that removed from the contract zone agreement. And I'm hoping that we will have another chance to address this plan. The lot sizes are too small, they should be bigger, but that will be at another meeting, I guess. And the roadway designs, I hope I don't get in trouble, but last night I walked the boundary of this, and where the roadway meets White Birch Lane is an alder swamp. It's not delineated, it doesn't show on this plan. This is very wetland. All the sheet runoff from the existing neighborhoods all go through this property. The town's GIS site shows a brook right where the multifamily units are going up. The brook has a gravelbed bed, defined gravelbed bed. It goes underground, percolates back up, and then the bottom half, that is almost all wetland, which the developer is going to give to the community because it's unusable. It's just a bad idea, in my opinion. Thank you very much.
My name is Adam LaFleur. I live at 48 Village Woods Circle. I'm here to express my disagreement with this plan and with the proposal that's being put forward. By no means a zoning expert, but my understanding is we're talking about contract zoning, and the definition on page two of the handout that was provided describes that as a residential development where the town council finds, due to nature or location, proposed development, there will be significant public benefit to the community. And my question is, what that public benefit will be? That is the main concern I have, from the impact fee to the protected character of the neighborhoods that this, that this proposal will impact, to the traffic, to some of the restrictions and requirements around the development with the over 55 area, how that will be enforced, how the one-and-a-half cars will be enforced. I'm also concerned about the open space. I think that's been mentioned several times. I don't see what benefit to the town, the wetland area will provide, and how all of these additional units will impact the parks, the schools, especially the schools, that's just, I don't see where that impact has been assessed and addressed, and it's just a major concern that I think a lot of us have. Generally, I feel that the, the density is too high and it's just too fast as far as the way that this is being proposed, that in such a small area that this is going to have a negative impact on our town, and I think that goes back to the definition of contract zoning, and that this is in the worst interests of the town to move forward with the proposal and to move forward with this. And thank you for your time.
My name is Ruth Kelly, and I live on the corner of White Birch Lane and New Portland Road. And I have raised two children on that property, very nervous about the traffic that's been there as I was raising them, constantly walking out for them to make sure they weren't going to run into the roads. And I am very, I can just imagine what will happen during high-volume air times when people are traveling in the morning to their commute and to their, where they work, and also coming back, because the traffic, when they come back from work, is at a standstill on New Portland Road for about an hour. It's very busy at all other times, but it is, comes to a standstill, and it's very busy in the morning as well. I can just see with, if there was a connection at White Birch Lane going onto New Portland Road, I could just see traffic backed up on White Birch Lane, trying to turn onto New Portland Road, and I can just see that happening for an hour. And with something like that, there becomes risks, safety risks for that neighborhood on New Portland Road, all along New Portland Road from that, the intersection near Cumbly Farms down to, well, it's not Dodge Oil, but Dodge Oil, there are family homes on that road, and it's, it is a difficult road to raise children on, but there are families there. And I can just see the increase in safety concerns that would occur if there was a outlet there. It would make matters worse, and it just scares me that it's an accident waiting for happen, to happen, because I know of young families that are living on that road now. I feel like the road east of Dodge Oil leading to the subdivision, hopefully with all the changes that people have spoken about for it, so that it's more accommodating and less crowded for the people that are going to live there. But to have the road not go on accessing it, not go on White Birch Lane, because that is like the worst intersection for, to put it on, New Portland Road, to have it further down where, towards Westbrook, maybe Topin Road, I know it was spoken about, Topin Road, and there was wetland issues about that or environmental impacts about that, but there's also environmental impacts on the roads leading to New Port, White Birch Lane. There has to be a safer alternative, because this increased traffic will be, cause more safety issues for people that live on New Portland Road with their children, and there needs to be people to come down there and look to see that it's a, it's a dangerous situation with, to add more traffic there to that region. Thank you.
I'm going to use the one underneath. I gotta use this one.
Oh, that was, yeah, I'll move out of your way.
Okay, is this?
We gotta plug you back in.
Please.
I took over, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
But I'll give it back to you.
I don't even know how to.
I can't help you with an apple. You'll turn it on upstairs.
I think they will, but I think I have to open it. All right.
You get logged in, it should.
It'll do, they'll do it.
Yeah.
My name is Susan Robey. I live at 34 Robey Street, and I am going to talk about this project in a little different way. I'm going to remind you, as Mrs. Wentworth did, that KVM's project can With the contract zone, the town has an impact on how it is done and what it looks like, but as far as I understand, the project will be built one way or the other. The aspects of the development that the contract zone allows the town to work with include design, layout of buildings, scale, and density. The comprehensive plan directs the developer to incorporate traffic calming measures in the development. This request was included in the town council's language regarding the contact zone. I have spent some time preparing amendments that I would like to see added to the contract zone. This is because there is no language in the contract zone as currently written that specifies how the development as proposed will protect the character of existing neighborhoods, nor how the design will be modified to reflect the character of a village feel. Those requirements were sent to the planning board in the town council's summary of what would be in the contract zone. In my view, protecting the character of existing neighborhoods includes traffic, construction traffic, both that ultimately generated by the development and cut-through traffic. Protecting the character of the existing neighborhoods is also about protecting tree canopy in the current streets, and streets that do not promote heavy, either heavy or fast traffic. It's about protecting the sense of diversity, variety of size, and different kinds of housing that reside in the various neighborhoods' buildings. Size includes lot size, setback provisions, building size, and occupancy. I think that the statement I made about a grid was not an accurate description of the three roads of the proposed development, which is six rows of houses, 13 to 16 houses on each, and one row north and south with nine houses. This is, I think a more accurate description is exactly that, and I guess I would call it a strip pattern. I would like to modify that. There is nothing in the current design that you could call a village block. But more striking to me is the lack of diversity. There, in our neighborhood, there are single-family houses that are one, two, or three stories high. There are big lots, small lots, flag lots. There are multifamily homes, which are basically small apartment houses. There are duplexes. There are a variety of setbacks, from less than 10 to more than 20. I have prepared, and I hope they can turn it on, sort of a, did I turn it off somehow?
Let's stick the log back in.
Yes. Oh, he's gotta put it up there. That, that is not 100% accurate. I'm not a draftsman, I'm not an engineer, but I did take mechanical drawing in college, and I still have a triangle rule, but, which was 60 years ago. So I tried to make a picture of what it would be like, and the reason I did that is the town councillor, who is not here, asked, well, yes, he is, not, asked me to do it. So now, can you put the first one on? I can't. There it is. Okay. This is the area of the single-family, I can see it, but they can't.
There we go.
There it is. Of the single-family dwelling part, I completely left off the apartment houses. And what you see is striped are roads. You can't get through that development with a car with that road layout without five right-angle turns. I don't think it would be used for cut-through traffic. I have made blocks. There are five blocks bounded by four streets, two blocks bounded by three streets, and there are nearly the same amount of dwelling units, but that requires the use of flag lots. There are various sized dwellings that are allowed, or buildings that are allowed in the transfer of development, which are duplicates, duplexes, which also can have a mixed-use components, and there are three multifamily units that take 20,000 square feet that also allow, I'm not sure if they allow for mixed use, but there are a variety of sizes and building types that can be included in this development. What else can I say about it? And I would propose that in the contract zone, that it requires a percentage of the total units to be duplex lots, mixed-use, and multifamily, three-part, it's hard to describe what they're called. So that's a picture which is highly unlikely to be practical, but it's a concept of what a village design might look like. It might be possible to put the sewer system in in straight lines by using more of the 30-foot paved paths. I don't know about that, but it's a possibility. Okay, now, can I switch to the other one? There's another design, I don't know how to switch it. Is he up there? Maybe if I just push a button, it'll shift. Nope. Nothing. Ah, it did, all right. So this is the, the design as drawn by KVM. And what I've added, what I have done is modify the lot sizes to include the variety of buildings, and I have placed small roundabouts in most of the roads going through the development. It wouldn't be as effective, but it would be pretty effective if you've ever driven over them in Portland, and a bigger one in the dead intersection, the dead middle intersection. So that, that's just a picture of what could be. Maybe you could go back to the first one, or maybe I can. I can, huh? Left arrow? There it is. I will leave that one up. I put the three, actually, I'm going back to the other one. That didn't work. Maybe just go any other way? No, I can't do it. But on the other one, I put the three-family, multi-height apartment building in front of the much larger apartment buildings as sort of a buffer to the appearance. And I think the last thing before I get to specific changes, additions I would like to see in the contract zone and wording is, much of this work would not be necessary if there was a clear access to this development that did not require passage through long standard village neighborhoods. I believe that the community development department, as could be directed by the town council, should proactively lead and facilitate the acquisition of rights-of-way to create a such a roadway to an existing major road, such as South Street, the Day Road, or the New Portland Road. This effort not being just for the develop, this development, but for future developments in the village expansion districts, which will come. This type of work was done, starting 20 years ago, for the creation of the Gorham Bypass. The town council bought the land long before the bypass was approved. The following are specific questions and specific suggestions for modification and additions to the contract zone language. In the second whereas, if you can find it, I would ask that it be amended to allow for duplex mixed-use in the single-family area at a specific percentage of the total single-family residents, around 6%. And I would recommend including three unit, no, I got it backwards, five three-unit multifamily mixed lots used to be allowed to buffer the shift between the single lot residents and the large apartment buildings. In the section starting with now, therefore, which is part of the, part of or following the last where is, I, there are bullets rather than numbers. And in B, I talked about adding duplex mixed-use, 1,500-square-foot lots. C, flag lots allowed to complete blocks created to meet the village characteristics. D, increased to eight feet beside setbacks. The part, the original contract zone said six feet. The transfer of development ordinance states 10. And I'm saying this because many people have said the houses are too close together. Increase the range of setbacks to the rear, the statement is setbacks to the rear be 20 feet and 20 feet to the front. I would decrease the front lot setback to a possibility of 10 feet, because that's common in the village neighborhoods, and one of the ways that it looks like a village is if the setbacks are varied from house to house. And G, it talks about, does not include the word buffers, which is in the statement that is part of the transfer of development rights, so I would add buffer to that statement. Now, now I'm at the point bullets, which is under the last whereas. Bullet four, regarding calming solutions, what I would use for language is calming solutions will consist of more than stop signs. Bullet five, grid patterns, replace that with three identical long streets with 10 to 16 houses on similar lots on both sides of said streets, because I don't know what the name for that is. Bullet six, construction road will be completed prior to commencement of any construction. The use of any portion of Robey or Lincoln shall not be used for construction fact, traffic during the hours of village school opening and closing while school is in session. And those hours have to be determined by a traffic study or the public works department because it's not possible for me to say what they are just by observing the traffic that goes up and down our street. Further, construction traffic through the three village neighborhoods currently impacted will not be allowed on Saturday or Sunday, and cannot commence between, before 7:30 or persist beyond 5:00 PMs. These additions are all in support of maintaining the intent of the comprehensive plan of avoiding the negative impacts of traffic on the established village areas, although we all would like it to be different than that. Further, I believe that meaning, saying some type of tree canopy, which is existing in the development land, should be pursued and written into this document. And the conservation group asked about the timing of turning the land over to the Presumska Regional Land Trust, and I would think that it could be added to the document stated as related to either an event or a date. I don't know, I, this is not in what I wrote, but it might be of interest to the people in this room. The history of this land is that it belonged to Frederick Robey, who is an uncle of my husband, who has four sons, and this is land from his estate, and they tried for five years to get all of that land preserved as conservation land, and they could not find anybody who would support it or buy it, basically, for not a whole lot of money. And so they looked for, they decided they would have part of it developed, the developable part, and the remainder in conservation land, specifically because Fred Robey grew up in our house and in the house that's off Topin Lane, and he loved the Indian Camp Brook. There is an Indian camp there, they still find arrowheads, and he wanted this land, conservation, they want, his sons wanted this conservation land to be able to access the village school. So he came to us and asked us if we would give them some land so that they could get from the conservation land which wraps around from the New Portland Road all the way up to where this development is occurring, and we agreed to do that so that the land trust could build a trail through there. And they also came to us and said that it would be desirable to have a road that could come in from that direction, and we agreed to trade a buffer along our private way for a right-of-way across the bottom of our land to do that. So it's not, it, the whole purpose of setting it up the way they did was to preserve the conservation land to be able to access what is somewhat a historical portion of the land. I guess that's all I have to say, and if anybody wants to ask me any questions? No, all right. Now I can do something like turn it off. Just close it, that's what I'll do. All right. Thank you.
My ex-wife is in trouble, and I have to go get my son, but this is very important to me, so I want to speak, so my girlfriend's doing that for me gracefully. I am Justin Early from 46 Robey Street. Everybody's been speaking about this. One lady, she mentioned about not wanting to have been there if she knew this was gonna occur for her kid's sake. I am 100% on that, my son's four and a half. I bought my house two years ago. I wouldn't have paid what I paid for it knowing this was going in, honestly. And I say that knowing that with this development, the value would go up. Point-two-acre lots, I have point-six. I've got more lot, I've got a house nice, too, or will be, it's a fixer-upper. But hey, but the whole thing, and I do apologize if I go away from the contract zone portion of this, not my intention, but I have a lot of questions and concerns. One is, I just got a piece of mail certified from KV Enterprises. They said they were submitting an environmental, and I don't know the exact terms, on December 22nd. We have 20 days to file with the government for Department of Environmental, like, the group. Apologize, somebody else might know it better than me, I'm forgetting the words. So we have 20 days to file from receipt of application. It was certif, it was postmarked for the 9th, I received it on the 11th. The 11th is 20 days, the 9th is 18 days. So they didn't mail it as fast as they were submitting it, which you have 20 days and you're getting it on day 20, you can't really submit a written aspect on there. So they are, there seems to be some questionable aspects, because as another gentleman spoke about the wetland around the area of White Birch, I'm not an environmental person, I will say that right now in the studies, but I've chased my dogs in that woods, and when the water is going up to your knees, 50 yards from the yellow house on the corner of Robey Street, it's wetland out there, too, but that's not on all the maps of the, where they are literally developing everything is already wetland. It holds it, that was in April last year, so I know it was right after the thaw and everything was melting. But some of my more bigger concerns are the traffic, as everybody's pointed out, and the overpopulation, and I say this in the sense of, my son is in the pre-K system, he was able to get in this year, it's the first full year of it, it wasn't well-known, but I'm already seeing people posting about how they can't get their kids in, there's a lottery because it's overpopulated. There's a lottery because it's overpopulated. And now we're going to put in another 391 units. You know, there's going to be new kids coming into this to a pre-K system that's already overpopulated in year two. It's become a lottery. And maybe there is answers for this, and Mr. McCullough can maybe provide where the information came from, because I know in the previous meeting, it was said that, the study said that the apartments are young twenties or 55-plus is their study. And that's why they were okay with one and a half cars for traffic. But was that in the town where everybody wants to be in for the school system? What towns were that study in? Because you can't get into Gorham. Gorham has a coveted school system, one of the higher ones in the town, or in the state, sorry. And now you have an apartment available. You have a young kid. You'll get into the apartment to get them in the school system until you can find a home. But at the same time, they're saying the study shows that it won't be people with kids in these school, in these apartments. So obviously, everything is variable. So part, and the other parts I wanted to go at was the traffic, as pointed out, it shouldn't, you shouldn't have a development or a mini-town this size put on an existing road that wasn't made for it. I don't know where anybody lives for you, any of you gentlemen or ladies, but are you in a neighborhood? Do you want 400 homes connected to your neighborhood? Yes or no? And then if no, why not New Portland Road where there's the land access right there? They have the road frontage for it. Stink Drive has sewer. It's not far from that area, so it's not, they don't need Robey or Bramblewood for sewer access to develop this. And, and I guess this is part is definitely not related to the contract zone is, because I'm unsure, I'm a resident. These meetings aren't shared greatly through the town. I didn't know about it until 5 o'clock today. Even though I'm on the Facebook page, it's not shared or anything. But is it actually true that what we're saying here doesn't affect the development and it's going to occur no matter what? I guess I'm asking the board and the council. Is development occurring 100% and it's just speed and time? It's not shared. Nobody knows this. It's specified one way or the other. I know, I believe Susan said it's happening, which it seems like it is, but I spoke to somebody else earlier and they said it has to go to council for final approval still. We don't know where this stands. It's not being shared. I know I spoke in the summer, or the spring, a year ago to the planning board. The gentleman is not here today. He's the assistant one. Because I received something for the trust of Boothby, because that's who used to own my home. I asked him to update my information, and he had my address. I've received zero communication since I've done that. I don't actually get communication from this. It's being like held back or something's not being shared. It doesn't come out, it's not public knowledge. But, and then the other, the last thing I really want to go into, and this is some more clarification maybe for me, it was from that piece of mail I received, and maybe Mr. McCullough can help with this, is it said that the 43 homes are going through, they're going to do this, it's going to involve two roads with sidewalks and a gravel road, a building for utilities and a sewage pump. My question is, where is that building going because the whole characteristic of not affecting the village? I don't know where it's going. If it's going way down by the apartments, okay. If it's coming up by Robey, that's affecting the village. You're putting a commercial building pumping sewage right next to the school. So I'm just curious where that building's going because it's not been disclosed, and this is the first I ever heard of that building on the entire development. So I was just kind of very curious about that because I am right on the corner. If that's on the corner, that kills me. But, so I'm hoping maybe he can just align us on at least that piece of where that would be. And sorry, I was very flustered. I got kind of very caught off guard about that, my whole family issue. But thank you very much, and I'm hoping you can help us all.
I'm Peggy Marshand. I live in the village on 150 South Street. I'm on the corner of Ridgeway and South. And my husband and I have spent a lot of time talking about this, and we are very interested. We've been trying really hard to pay attention. We are not planners. We are not really good at reading all the whereas's, but we have been trying to pay attention. And I will acknowledge that sometimes we got mixed up. Is this the 43 development or is this the grand enchilada of them all development? So anyway, we had some questions that we came up with as we were talking. And first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. So we have looked at the ordinances. We've come to the planning board staff and talked with them over the years this has been going on. We've tried to understand land use development codes. We've looked at transfer of development rights. So we're not ignorant, but we're really having a hard time holding this all together. So I have maybe five questions that have come up, and I understand why people in the audience get so frustrated because we do have questions that are really important to us. And of course, at a public hearing, you're not able to answer our questions. So we come back again with the same questions, and you'll have to forgive us because they're still important to us and our understanding of what's going to happen to our own little lives if this development goes in. So, water. Water is a big question. In our neck of the woods, the water table is high. Now I'm at, on South Street. In this neighborhood, many homeowners routinely depend on sump pumps to keep their cellars dry. Now, we know from living around here that Robey Woods tends to be wet year-round. With small streams and soggy areas, even in seasons of drought, there can be water down there. We also know that, this is science, we're up higher, the water trickles down, there's a slow grade, and so continually water is going down the streets. So we're aware of this. A recent development in Gorham, which is just around the corner from us on Maplewood Avenue, it changed the name when it turned the corner. It's called Deerfield Drive. This is an example of what water does. So the water, yesterday when I walked down, even though it was cold out, the water is still running down Maplewood Avenue. It goes down to the bottom. It turns the corner. Now what's interesting is when this development was being put in, the developers had to hook up a way to get electricity to a generator to run a pump that ran 24/7 during their construction phase. There are five houses now that, I think four of them have people in them. And it's as if they piled up a whole bunch of sand and made a great big high pile. They put the houses there, and then they dug a moat around this little development. And that continues to have running water coming down Maplewood, turning the corner and going down. It turns the corner by the last house, and then it continues on towards Robey Woods. So there's a lot of water. I have to say that going down in that development is kind of shocking. The solution, if that's the solution, is kind of ugly, and it's likely to not be particularly healthy because as the water runs down Maplewood, it picks up road pollutants. So I just wanted to think about that. I wouldn't want my kids, if I lived there in a over $600,000 house, to be playing in that water. So water is a problem in our neighborhood, and our question has been for a long time, what do the KVM developers intend to do with all the water? As part of that, speakers have identified portions of the woods as being a significant aquifer. We had more than one speaker over the months we've been here talk about that aquifer. Possibly there are more. So what's going to happen with that? What is the obligation of the developers? What's the obligation of the planning board and the town council to have water? We understand that the town will have our plan of density, and there will be access to sewer and, you know, town water coming in. But it doesn't mean that we don't have to be respectful and responsible for aquifers that exist in this place. We can't destroy them to bring in water from someplace else. We have to be mindful of the whole picture. So that was one question. And I'd love to know about addressing the aquifer. And I know you can't give me an answer, so I might go home yet again a little frustrated with a question that has no answer. Trees. Well, we have talked a lot about trees. And our family lost a huge tree. It was an old tree. It cost $3,000 to have a crane come and take it down. It was on the corner of Ridgeway and South Street. It is a devastating loss, not just to me, but to our whole neighborhood. Trees are very, very important. What do we know about trees? Well, speakers before me have talked about the fact that trees are important, and in this landmass called Robey Woods, we have a lot of significant trees. In fact, we know that trees produce and clean our air. They mitigate rising temperatures. They serve as a carbon sink. They establish and maintain soil stability. They create vast networks of valuable underground microorganisms. They literally fire synapses to communicate with and support other trees to keep them healthy and safe. They help to control erosion from the water that drains down, the water we were just talking about, and into its small streams. They serve as a habitat for wildlife, and of course, the list about trees could go on and on. What's also important about trees is they grow slowly. They're a lot like human beings because they're vulnerable and they feel pressures as their growing situations change beyond their healthy ranges. In a time filled, the time we're living in right now with rapid changes, it seems to me that we need to provide safe places for trees. We need to take care of them. We need to provide, if we're really doing our homework and we're thinking about this clearly, we need to make sure that the homes we build have as many mature trees already on them as we can do, because it's the mature trees that provide shade that are going to make their energy costs less, as well as do all the other things trees do. They cool and they calm. It should be a win-win. And yet, my husband and I have had the profession, the impression as we've been here, that maybe the developers are pretty reluctant to really make a commitment to have trees be a priority. We've mentioned them over and over again, and they seem to think that maybe it's just going to be too expensive to pay enough attention. But I'd like to think about this. We know that this particular land has been in tree growth. We know, people know this land. We know that foresters have been there. It should not be an untoward idea to hire a professional forester to come and evaluate the trees that are significant and should, should be saved and protected. Also, drone technology makes it entirely easy and possible to zoop around the sky and look at the trees that are there and identify which ones are healthy, which ones need culling, and do all the things that you can do to make this an environment that will have health benefits for everybody who uses it. So, this question that we don't have an answer to is, will KVM be opening, open to saving this resource, trees, with careful husbandry, or will they be more likely to chop them down because they're in the way? Traffic. Traffic, traffic. Traffic is just a mess in the village. Still, always, and ongoing. There are simply, right now, as we speak, too many cars on the road at the same time for long portions of each day. Many of them still speeding at 40 and 50 miles an hour in a 25 mile an hour zone where I live. Believe it or not, we have a small driveway. We can't have a truck, a plow truck come in, which means my husband and I, he's 86, I'm not, but we, we shovel our own driveways, except when our neighbor Eric helps us out, which is a great thing that he does. A friend last year gave me and my husband each an orange traffic cone so we could put it beside the end of our driveway. So when we're shoveling, and you should feel my muscle, when we're shoveling, maybe it would slow cars down. Do you think it worked? No. Cars go by and splash us soaking wet, including town trucks at times, town plows. So it's, it's kind of difficult. So traffic is on our mind, and speed is on our mind. What, in talking to people around the town, we observe, is the fact that people who live in the village don't really think people who are serving us on village councils and boards really understand what it's like to live all day long beside traffic or amongst traffic. So with these small roads that you're proposing to use for heavy-duty construction, you're going by people's backyards. And we depend on our backyards because a lot of us have front yards that are unusable because of facing South Street. Trucks are dirty. I've lived in my house for 47 years. Only the first summer I lived there did we ever open our front windows. For the rest of 46 more years, our front windows have always, always been closed. We can't have them open. It's too dirty. It's too loud. It's really nasty. Why haven't we moved? Well, that's a good question. I'm waiting to see what happens with the village. Maybe there'll be a house I'd like. All right, so that's traffic. So the question is, and I've lost my place, the question is about traffic is all really questions about density. How many cars are too many? In a development, how big is too big? How much density is enough? How much density is too big a price to pay in a small village? That's four questions, I think. One, two, three, four, five. Yeah. And we don't know the answer to that, and we're hoping that we can come together, and I think it should have some compromise to do that. All right, the last question we had is similar to what Mrs. Robey was asking earlier about this road. Why in the world would we ever dream of using small roads for big construction purposes? Well, I can see right now, the only reason we're considering is because we haven't come up with any other ideas, and we really need to figure that out. We need to put in a dedicated road if we're going to do this right. The language of the contract zone states that a proposed residential development must offer a significant public benefit to a community as a result of the rezoning, and that such public benefit is consistent with and advances the goals and policies of the town's adopted comprehensive plan. I think that's a mouthful, but I think it's an important mouthful. There has to be a public benefit. We really thought that the idea of affordable housing would be the thing that would, I'm glad in our hearts, because we all know lots of people desperately need houses they can afford. But right now, it feels like that's still pretty far away, and that the first houses likely to go in are going to not be meeting the criteria of affordable. They're going to be more market-based as we understand it. And it's going to be many phases down the road before we get to this. I was interested in the Portland Press Herald on January 9th. We learned that Gorham Savings Bank has partnered with Avesta Housing for, quote, "incorporating sustainable building design into new affordable developments with a focus on solar energy, which both reduces Avesta's carbon footprint and decreases housing costs for residents." Last year, Avesta Housing delivered almost 200 new affordable homes to people in need in Maine and New Hampshire. This, to us, is what a public benefit could and should look like. We would like to have that passion for some of that kind of development be part of the conversation from the very get-go here. So, we want a road. Is there going to be a plan for a dedicated road? We'd like to have affordable housing. And that, my dears, is that.
I think we'll, we'll just take one more, and then we'll close the public hearing.
Hello. My name is Lou Sims. I live at 9 Lucino Terrace. I am on the town council. I wasn't planning on speaking. I just came to listen. I was actually inspired by Mrs. Robey's drawing, which actually I thought was not bad. And I would just point out that, in fact, a, well, first of all, it's impossible to add more people to the town of Gorham without creating more traffic unless we build mixed-use neighborhoods where people don't have to drive every time they need to go somewhere. So the only way to, to limit traffic and actually get more growth is to be able to build mixed-use neighborhoods where you could go to the corner store and get your bread and milk. A co-working space where you can just walk downstairs and go to work instead of having to drive out of and go to work instead of having to drive out of town to go to work. The good news for the developers is you can charge a lot more for those units. People will pay more to live in an area that's a walkable mixed-use neighborhood where they don't have to drive, and to tree growth as well. People will pay 20% to 30% more for a home with a beautiful old tree in it. That's, I've been trying to educate myself. I've been learning some things about development recently. But, so that's another thing. And I think the more walkable, regarding the contract zone, I definitely would urge the roads to be designed in such a way that people can't speed down them. The speed limit should be as low as possible. The more walkable and safe the environment is, the more, the higher property value you'll be able to get for each house that you build. So I think there's ways to have this, the proposed development be built in such a way that will benefit both the developer as well as the local residents that are nearby. Thank you.
Thank you. We will close the public hearing portion of the meeting, and we'll bring it back to the board. And I think there's a bunch of items that maybe we can help answer that I heard, and I think maybe some of those I can ask the planning department. There was one item that someone mentioned about the road width, and there was a 22 versus 24-foot. Is it, I think the width here, I think they stated it was 22 feet?
Correct. I believe they're referencing the urban access standard compared to the urban sub-collector standard.
Right, okay. So that answers that one. I don't remember who had that, but...
The question was whether this new road became a, now a sub-collector, needed to be improved to the sub-collector standard, I think was the...
Yeah, and if the board remembers that we've been going through the review, is if we widen the road to 24, that means traffic's going to go faster. So I think the board, when we were looking at the last development, is do we do the 22-foot wide or the 24-foot wide? And I think it was decided that we wanted to keep traffic slower on the roads and do the gravels and the pavement to meet that standard. So I think this developer could widen that Bramblewood Raiden to 24 feet. But again, then there's secondary concerns that come with it. Traffic's going to go faster, it's going to be wider, it's going to seem like it's wider than before. So there's been this back and forth of, do we keep it narrow to keep the traffic slow and keep it more walkable?
That's right. Yep. Thank you.
I was going to ask Mr. Chairman, would you like to go through sort of a very short overview of where this has been, and have us hit some highlights about some of the questions?
Yes.
Because there's some new people in the room, and it might be helpful.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, it would also be helpful to describe the difference between the contract zone and the initial phase of the proposal.
My thought is to first let everyone know that the developers came about two and a half years ago to the staff. And the staff, they came with one connection, and that one connection was to Robey Street. And in working with the staff and the planning board during the sketch plan phase, which is the very first look at the proposed development, the planning board worked on multiple road connections to disperse the traffic rather than have it only on Robey Street. That's sort of where we've been in terms of road network and connections. This is a multiple-phase process, not only for the subdivision review itself, because it has multiple phases, and they've proposed to build out in multiple phases, but it's also separated into what's called a contract zone, and it's exactly what it sounds like. It's a contract with the town and an agreement and a negotiation to have things spelled out in a specific document so that the developer and the town can have an agreement that is not necessarily spelled out in an ordinance. And in this case, it got started because of the growth management ordinance that was put in place right after they came in for their sketch plan review. So with that additional ordinance in place, they wanted to request additional construction during each phase. So that's how we wound up doing a contract zone with them. The subdivision and site plan process is a completely different process and a completely different set of ordinances, excuse me, that will deal with traffic. Have they submitted a traffic study? They've submitted a preliminary study that we've given comment back that was reviewed by a peer-review engineer who's a traffic engineer specific for the planning board to go through and review. That's already been done. They need to do another phase to that because there's comments provided to them. It's been a few months now, so they, now they have to provide additional information based on those peer reviewer comments. Road design and width and trees that are left on the parcel is all something that comes with the subdivision and site plan review. Stormwater and all the water on the parcel that is there to deal with, and where does that get rooted to, and how is that dealt worth, that all gets reviewed in the subdivision and site plan review process. And that's their next submission, which they have submitted it, we have it in our office, and if you want to come look at it, you may, and that is to be reviewed during your February meeting. Did I miss any of the very highlighted things? There's other things involved in site plan and subdivision review, but those are the things that people really have hit upon that are questions.
Thank you.
Any, anything I missed, let me, we'll answer them.
I don't think so. Anything else the board can think of, those types of questions? There was one question about like enforcement of, you know, the 55 and over and the parking. That's code enforcement usually handles those things, right?
Yeah, and it's, it'll be conditioned. There's another development we have with the 55 and older, a Bethesda known, and their homeowners association documents are recorded and required that restriction. So a lot of times, those homeowners association do a lot of that self-enforcement, but staff can step in if needed.
You know, one of the things I'm hearing in the questions, and I think I wrote down just about all the questions or issues that were brought up, but I think, you know, as we talk about tonight, we're talking about the contract zone. And Carol, you very clearly stated how the process breaks down and where the different decision points are. But I think there, what I'm hearing from the group tonight and from other public input we received is that maybe there's a desire for some more of this to be built into the contract as contractual agreements upfront. You know, yes, we will talk about all those points at each phase if this, if and when this project moves forward, and we'll go through the ordinances and see how they apply. But what I'm hearing is that maybe some more of this should be built into the contract, and maybe we need to kind of kick that around a bit on some of these issues. You know, I think you just mentioned about tree removal and stormwater, all that, how the street layout and all that. But I guess I'm hearing more that maybe, maybe we need to recommend that more of it be built into the contract.
Yes.
So I'm going to look at the applicant and the representative. So I guess, since this is a contract zone and this is your request for a contract zone and hearing the input tonight, so I think really there's two options on the board for the table, right? Do an up or down vote on the language that's currently labeled for public hearing to see where the board is, or do you want the board to work through all these comments and review the contract zone and make recommended changes, and then move forward with rehearing the public hearing? I think that's a, first, I think we'll get the applicant's input on that.
With the board's permission?
Yes.
Owen McCullough, Sabago Technics. So let's tackle a couple of these first, traffic, for instance, okay? The contract zone will, when it goes to the subdivision review, the full design will require a traffic movement permit through the Maine Department of Transportation. That's a pretty substantive review. There's a lot of work that goes into that. So to invest that kind of work, we're not saying we're not going to do it, but to invest that work at a contract zone level without having any guarantee or certainty it's going to get through this process is a huge expense for the developer and a pretty substantive process. Stormwater management. You review subdivisions all the day long, or all day long, or on a regular basis. The town's got a town engineer, there's a peer review. This will go to the DEP for Site Location Development Act permit, has to meet Chapter 500 stormwater management provisions. All of those things get addressed. But to deal with that and address it now and design a system is the cart before the horse on this. We're not, we're not saying we're not going to do it. We have to do it, you have to do it on every single project, but it's timing of when you do it on the projects. The road network, configuration of the road networks, those will have comments from the Department of Transportation as we go through that process. I appreciate the sketch. Thank you, Susan, for putting that up. A couple of things that we, I'm sure we would get asked about is having staggered intersections, site distance, separation between entrances, traffic flow. Public works may have some comments about how they plow and maintain those roads, if they're staggered and more circuitous to get it around. So we understand that. But that's got to go through, that gets worked out at the more substantive review process with the subdivision. The contract zone, in our mind, is the start, is a contract between the developer and the town that sets the framework for going forward. And that framework is a much higher level. This is development density. We're going to have one phase of 55 and older, the first two levels of the, of the commercial portion of it could be retail or commercial development. We're going to do transfer of development with a certain amount of density. We're going to develop at a certain pace. Part of the agreement in there was how many units would be built in a year of single-family and multifamily. There's a provision in there about performance bonds and when you, how far you get into one before you can start to the next. Those are the high-level things. Everything else, and that's the important part of the framework. Everything else then moves, when it goes into the other process, we will have to look at roads and grades and sewer and water. The plans actually show where the pump station is. The pump station has to be down towards the lower end of the development, and I think it's actually on the subdivision set that Tom's reviewing right now. So all of those things come into play and get reviewed. In fact, in the contract zone, we talked about, I believe, the connection through over to White Birch and over to New Portland Road is the primary construction access. We did put that in there. I believe that's in there, Tom, isn't it? And that, we understood that. So we've put the items in there that form the framework, but there'll be a lot of detail and more substantive review when it comes down to where the street trees and land clearing and phase and sequencing and road widths and traffic calming. Interesting enough, traffic calming, just real quick on it, you build wide, you build wide, big roads that are long and straight, people are going to drive to how they, it's proven time and time again, town of Cape Elizabeth, where I've done a fair amount of work in over the years, has narrower roads and tighter curves that makes the road more uncomfortable, so people tend to slow down and drive slower. So traffic calming is a real thing, and to Tom's point, simply widening out roads isn't always a good idea. So all of that gets dealt with at the subdivision and site plan review. We're just looking to set the framework at the contract zone level. And I don't know if you two have anything else to add. With the board's permission, Mr. Mayada from KV Enterprises would like to address the
My name's Vincent Mayada, and I'm one of the principals of KV Enterprises. I'd like to thank everybody that came tonight and spoke. We appreciate your concerns. We understand your concerns. But I think a lot of things that got passed around the town, you might be getting them, you know, not quite accurate. So to begin with, we don't just come in and say how we're going to build roads. We have to follow, the town has an ordinance that says exactly how sharp a curve can be, how sharp a dip can be. The town tells us how the road has to look. If we vary from that and do the nice drawing that Mrs. Robey drew, it doesn't meet any of the town's standards for the road construction. It would be more traffic calming, totally agree with that, but it would never pass with the snow removal and all the other things. There's just so many things that were said tonight that are great ideas, getting out through to New Portland Road through a different avenue. It's really not an option, as Mrs. Robey mentioned. Her family has wished, has requested that we turn most of that land over, which, by the way, is about 40% wetlands, 40%, not 100%, over to the Conservation Commission. We would, we would put a road through there, and we could put a road through there if we didn't have those deed restrictions from the seller. Some of the other things, the school department, this, you know, is very common. I've been doing this since I was 15. I'm very old, so I've been a long time doing this. Quite often, these planning board meetings, turning to school board meetings, because it's scary because you don't know how many kids are going to be there. But I can tell you, if you have a Google on your phone, Google what the student population was in Gorham, Maine 10 years ago. Just do that for me. And then Google what it is today. It's the same. It hasn't changed in 10 years. 10 years ago, the school enrollment is what it is today. What has changed, if you Google this too, is the children per class went from 17 children per class average 10 years ago to 12 today. So there's more classrooms, and if you Google it, it's, that's what I came up with. Maybe you'll come up with something different, but I promise you, I did it. I Googled it. That's where I got my information. It's all available from the state records. So I don't want it to be a school board meeting. That's not what I'm here for. But the staff, we were going to go in and build single-family homes, all single families. We don't, we don't make our money with apartments. We're not apartment owners. We don't particularly care if we do apartments, quite frankly. The staff asked us to do fewer single-family homes because single-family homes generate more kids. More kids are bad for the school. That seemed like a logical thing. So we added more apartments and fewer single-family homes. Those kind of things we can, we can move around. I think the town has done a fantastic job in both reducing the potential number of children because the single-family homes are where the majority are going to come from, and also, as was pointed out by Carol earlier, there's five or six roads now that are all affected with, so good or bad, so there's someone in here doesn't want any cars on Bramblewood, somebody else doesn't want anybody on White Birch Lane, and every single road, nobody wants cars on Robey. So nobody wants the cars to go their road. But honesty, guys, when you spread it over several roads, that's good planning, just so that everybody doesn't get them. And anybody, you can shake your head and be mad at us, but at the end of the day, if you buy a home that abuts 135 acres of developable land in the village and you think that it's going to be forever wild, and it's zoned, growth zone, I mean, you've got to take a little bit of responsibility for that. So all those things that were said, I'm happy to go one by one if people want to talk to me outside, or I'd rather do it here. But, you know, everything that you hear isn't always true. We're leaving 81 acres. We're not cutting a tree. We have 132 acres. 81 of it, we're not even going to cut one tree. We're not even going to cut one. And so in order to do that, to preserve 81 acres of untouched property, we have to jam everything into a smaller box, right? And then everybody's concerned... And then everybody's concerned that the box is too small to fit the density. Well, it is small, the lots are small. We've developed properties like this before, and they're, quite frankly, the most popular projects we've built are the smaller lots. People don't want to maintain big lots, there's a certain amount of people that don't. And the final thing is, the free ride, I mean, we're paying $3.5 million to the town of Gorham for this development, if it gets built, just for permits and connection fees, permits and connection fees. Then there's impact fees that are a couple million more units, if the project gets built at the current density that's drawn, there'll be another $2.5 million worth of fees that we have to pay to build that number of units. So it's going to be north of $5 million paid to the town. Every year after the project's built, if you went with today's tax rate, it's 1.8 million, today's tax rate would be generated from this project every year for taxes, just real estate taxes, not counting car registrations and everything else that passes around through the town. So it isn't, a lot of the things that people think, their concerns, and I appreciate their concerns, but they're not, not all of them are true. Some of them, some of them are good questions, but a lot of this, just come in and bang it out and steal our money and run, it's just simply not what's happening. In order to pay $5 million to the town of Gorham, you need to build a certain number of units, you know, so that you can make a little more than $5 million, so you can pass on the $5 million. If you want affordable housing, reduce those fees, give us the $5 million, and we'll put it into affordable housing, instead of giving it to recreational fees and school fees and traffic fees and sewer fees, all the fees. I mean, someone's got to pay for that, and in order to do that, you need to build this kind of density. So thank you, guys, for your time, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and I hope you all have a good night.
Thank you. Yeah, I, you know, I think the contract zone is, is an opportunity for the town to kind of shape this, and I'd argue if we didn't do a contract zone, I don't know, it might be, might be less of what people would want to see, but, yes, Russell?
Excuse me, Russell Frank. Mr. Med, I really have two questions. One, thanks to the prodigious efforts of Mrs. Roby, who's like a one-woman research and development department, in her first paragraph in her letter, she states that if the contract zone is not approved, and the standalone project proposal meets the requirements, KVM will be able to build the development, albeit at a slower rate, and I'm curious how that would, well, why, I guess is my question, why would you build slower?
Yeah, I meant to touch on that, but I got a little off-target there, but, so the current zone allows us to do this development as it's drawn, the current zone, we can build it that way. The reason that we agreed to put more apartments and fewer single families was to try to get a contract zone primarily to build 10 units a year instead of five per year on the single-family houses. So right now, the town has an ordinance that says you can only build five houses a year. We're fine with that. I mean, so when someone says, we said, if we don't get the zone changed, we're going to, we'd do whatever we damn well please, that's not, that's not what we said. We said we already are allowed to do what we're proposing, just at a slower rate, so that's what she's talking about. And it's come to my attention that the state is now, has, well, it doesn't matter, the state's not in favor of these kind of control, towns' control intensity, so you're probably going to see those kind of things go away in my lifetime, so at some point, we'll be doing more than five per year anyway, so we're willing to take that jump and just get started and pick away at it, so.
It's 10 per year?
Oh, it's 10, it's 10 per year currently, we were, oh, it's 10 per year currently, we were going to, we were asking for 15.
Right.
So that's what's in the contract zone, is 15.
Thank you for that answer.
Thank you.
My second question, please stay there.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
You talked about school children, the number of school children 10 years ago is about the same it is now, and I've been doing substitute teaching for just two years, and I teach in all three elementary schools, the middle school, the high school. I don't see classes as small as 12.
I'm just giving you, it's on the state's school department paperwork, so that's, I don't know where they get their information, I assume it's from the town of Gorham. So if you Google it, it'll come right up, it did for me.
I just thought of something that might help to answer my own question. I know there are special education children's classes, and they are smaller in population than the general education, so maybe that would, maybe I just answered my own question.
Yeah, and another important statistic is, if you Google it, Gorham has issued over 500 building permits in that same 10-year period. So if a building permit adds a certain number of children, you can calculate what's happened in the last 10 years. If someone could get the true data from your own departments, how many building permits and how many kids it added, it's not overwhelming, the school, the development all over the state of Maine is being pushed back because of schools. Nobody wants to provide the proper schools, so they're trying to keep housing, a housing shortage, and it's just driving the prices up for everybody, and it's causing, it's causing a big problem for the state, to get workers and get to be, get people to be able to afford housing. It's tough. And as far as investor housing, building affordable housing, they're all government-subsidized. We're not government-subsidized, we're paying full-boat taxes, we're paying all our own bills, we don't get taxpayer money to fund our project, but, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm embarrassed to interrupt, just a quick question. The public, public hearing is closed, apologize.
I'm having trouble hearing you, sir.
Was there another question on the board?
Yeah, I would have a question for you. Thank you. So there were quite a few people asking with regard to not only traffic, but the construction traffic in particular, you know, we've talked about traffic of the residents who live in a future development here, let's put that aside for the moment. Could you just talk a little bit about how construction traffic would be controlled?
We want to come in with all the construction traffic, at least the majority of it, through White Birch, and I think that's the right way to do it, but we don't have permission currently from the city council to drive across that section of the property. There's a section there that we don't have. Mrs. Roby is doing some horse trading with us, we've gotten to the school property, but we don't have permission to go through it. So without council approval on that, they can't come in through White Birch. So someone that doesn't want traffic on White Birch might say, hey, don't give it to them, but then that puts all the burden on the other streets, which, you know, quite frankly, are town roads, and, you know, if we damage them, we have, obviously have to fix them, but we don't want to go on those smaller roads either, just like the neighbors don't want to say, we don't want to go there, we want to get a better construction access through White Bridge, White Birch, and that's really just all hanging on the council, whether or not they, if they don't let us go there, we'll have to use other means, so.
Good. And as at this point, isn't the, I'm sorry, there's a question over here, the connection to White Birch, isn't that part of the current contract?
It's identified in the contract zone.
Thank you. So that would happen.
But it's not as a requirement pre-development?
So I guess, let me look to clarify, so you're asking me, like, as the contract zone is identified as a requirement for Phase 1, they're currently going through with a subdivision phase, if they don't have a contract zone, are they required to make a connection to White Birch Lane as part of that development? The planning board is going to review the project, whether it meets the current standards, and if it does, that's what the board should be reviewing.
So what you're saying, Tom, is what a lot of people alluded to here tonight, is that if it does meet the standards under the, Phase 1, as a standalone project presented to this board, if it meets all the ordinances, our duty is to, is to approve that and move it along?
Correct.
And we will have four other roads that access the project in Phase 1, so, we, White Birch is definitely the way to go, so.
No question, no question.
Is there, are there any other questions from the board? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have edited the contract zone language. Do we have any edits that we want to discuss this evening?
That was my next question.
To move this thing along?
That was my next question.
How, what's your pleasure? Do you want to go page by page, item by item? I mean, I have individual items scattered throughout.
Yeah, let's, yeah, go right, go right ahead.
Is that the pleasure of the board? Do we want to?
Sure.
Or do you have a?
If there's nothing else to discuss, we might as well do that, that's the next, next thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
And I'm just, I'm just starting on page eight, so if others have something earlier, I'm looking at the literature that we received in our packet for this meeting, date-wise. I'm looking on page eight, and I'm just curious, whereas, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, the sixth whereas down, considering that the council has a comprehensive plan in the near future, is it prudent to suggest that we should write in, whereas the property located within the growth area is identified in the town's, should we say 2016 comprehensive plan, so that in three or four years, when the next comprehensive plan is completed, and this document is still viable, that no one misconstrues which comprehensive plan that this document
So just looking at the town attorney, you can make that change, I mean, it will help just clarify in the future, I don't think it hurts anything if you put 2016.
Yep.
I think that's applicable throughout, wherever we are referencing the town's comprehensive plan.
Yep.
May I continue?
Yes.
Thank you. Considering comments made earlier, specifically Mrs. Roby, on page 10, letter E, the minimum front and rear setbacks were 20 feet, the suggestion was, front could be reduced to 10, is that something we want to consider or leave as is?
I, what's your, what's the, why would you recommend that?
I believe Mrs. Roby was trying to get, we mentioned throughout this document, the village feel, and I've walked down every single street down here, and no disrespect, there is no village feel. It's a mishmash based on areas of when houses were developed, the pitch of the roof, the front elevation, the distance from the sidewalk, it has its own feel. So to suggest perhaps that all housing should be a certain distance, I'm fine with that, but maybe it could be between, between 10 and 20 feet, and, I don't know, it's easy for a civil engineer to set a laser and say everything's 10 feet from this boundary line, but, but if there's a radius...
That's what I was suggesting, that you increase it to 10, I'm sorry, that you change it, it's limited, it's limited right now to 20.
And, and, thank you, your idea was to reduce it to 10?
No, to allow it to be 10 as well as 20, as well, and maybe I didn't say it clearly enough, to allow it to be different, but that it could be as small as 10 or as great as 20.
So Jim, if you walk down the street, you'd have different setbacks.
Sure, sure, sure.
So just stagger, give a little more.
All right, I took it as a concrete, no pun intended, a concrete number, all right. So again, to the board, do we want to make that variable frontage could be between 10 and 20 feet?
So my thought is that the lots are so small already, that I was concerned that a reduction in the setbacks would then cause the lot sizes to seem even smaller, and I would rather address that. I personally, right now, I would rather leave it and let that be addressed during the individual site plans, if there's recommendations from the developer when we get, if we get to that point. That would be my thought, but I'm open to...
Well, I think, I'd take a step up, you know, we're arguing over feet, but I think what I heard, the suggestion from Mrs. Roby, is something, just to give a thought, staggering the building envelope with, you know, staggering the position of the building within the building envelope on the site to give a different feel, so you don't have a, and you've heard this from me, and you're going to hear it again, I don't like, you know, this cookie-cutter street with house, 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 house. I think we can do better than that, I hope we can do better than that, but I think the idea is valid, is that can you move the homes around the site to give the neighborhood just a different feel, so it isn't just a cookie cutter, someone walks down the street, they knock on the wrong door because they think they're at their house. Not that that wouldn't happen to my brother-in-law, who did that in my neighborhood.
I'm okay, you know, I can't, I'm not, yeah, you want to go to 10 feet?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So there's, I guess, a kind of middle road that I think will get to everyone, so if we refer to the minimum front, really just identify the setbacks, will meet the development transfer ordinance, basically that will give a variety of setbacks, that will give single-family lots a minimum setback of between 20, I mean, excuse me, 10 feet and a maximum of, excuse me, minimum front yard for one and two families, 10 feet in a, excuse me, urban access, and then 20 feet in a maximum setback of 20 feet. So you can have a 10 or a 20 for single families, two families, excuse me, multi-families go up to, sorry, just lost the page. Actually, there is no maximum, and then for multifamily, it is 25.
Tom, if it may, I guess what I was proposing is, could we have more guidance language, rather than get down to the weeds of the, actually, it's just a more of a conceptual saying, the desire is to have utilized setbacks to vary the position of the homes, blah, 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 just to get a different look to the neighborhood.
Yeah, so basically, the development transfer identifies a minimum and a maximum, so basically it says, you have to build within this frontage. So here's an example, is people said Bramblewood Lane, those houses, if you're driving down Bramblewood on the right, have been built to the development transfer standards, so that's why they're all in the line, the same frontage. So in the development transfer, what you're looking to do is create neighborhoods that look like neighborhoods, right? The fronts are kind of aligned, somewhat similar, you get a little bit of variety, but you don't have a, someone that has a 10-foot setback, and then someone that has a 70-foot setback, and then they're looking in your backyard, so there's some guidance there to kind of give you a minimum, maximum. So if you reference the development transfer standards, it will give guidance, as the neighborhood comes to pull the building permit, here's your minimum, here's your maximum. They're a little bit different for single-family and two families than multi-families, where you want to give a little bit more of a setback from the front or the side or the rear, so that's why it's a little bit different trying to find it on the table, but there's guidance. If you just reference the development transfer standard, it will automatically build that in.
Sure, and that's wonderful, so you have a tool there. I'm saying, would it be possible to add language in here, just that, you know, the goal language, utilize the development transfer setback to vary the position of the homes on the lot, something like that.
We've done the, show me the requirements of the development transfer in C, that exact language is in C, right above this.
Because we make it like C, that achieves what we're looking for.
If you'd like, put the same language in D and E.
What do you think of that?
Yeah, I just want to have some, you know, so that someone just doesn't read, hey, the setback is this. No, they understand why we want it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Russell Frank, I'm wondering if we leave the contract zone numbers, the D, six feet, and the E of 20 feet, if we leave them untouched like that, I mean, that becomes part of the contract. So, then, comes time to start proposing houses and building, can they do something that's not in conformance with what the contract says? So, in other words, I'm suggesting that in the contract, we have these variances of distances as part of the contract.
Yes, so we can identify the development transfer standards, sending, telling them a minimum, maximum, and then, I was just talking to Carol, that we could have a section, maybe an F, that kind of says buildings... I'm just trying to figure out what the wording is going to be about a variety of setbacks, like if you get two... Yeah, I mean, what are we talking about, a variety? Within two houses can't be the same, three houses in a row can't be the same setback in a row, they're going to be varieties, so this one's at 10 feet, the two are 10 feet...
Are we getting too far down? See, I'm trying to pull it back to more of a guidance language in the contract, you know, because we're talking about, what is the purpose of the contract, the structure and the guidance. When we get down to the subdivision review, we'll be referencing back to the contract. The contract says that the desire, or the, you know, a desire is to have the homes, the homes, you know, the position varied within the, or the building envelope varied within the lot, within the allowance of the contracts. We can argue, then it gives us some guidance language, and then at subdivision review, we can argue about 15 feet or 27 and a half feet. Just an idea.
If we reference the development transfer overlay district in D and E, when we come, when it comes time to review, do a subdivision review, can we, we have the ability to shape that in the way that David is mentioning, right?
Yes, so I think he wants a little bit, I think we can easily add show meet the requirements of the development transfer. I think it's giving the board a little bit more flexibility regarding that language. So, I'm going to look to the town attorney to see.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Might it be more helpful and less complex if we just didn't have D and E as part of the contract?
I thought that's what the town planners' recommendation was. The subsequent discussion about standards against the need for D and E, is that right?
If they're following the development transfer overlay zoning district, they're going to have to follow the standards within it anyway. These were just tweaking the existing standards within it.
I'm sorry, they were what, Carol?
They would have to follow the development transfer overlay standards anyway.
Yeah, but I missed what you said after that.
This is, our effort in C, D, and E was to tweak those standards.
Oh, to tweak, that was what I missed there, okay. But yet, you're not tweaking as much as you're restricting. Is that a good thing?
In this case, it doesn't give enough flexibility by having this be exact, and what I'm hearing is the need for variety.
Yep. Okay, so, back to my original suggestion, would it be better if we didn't have D and E, and I don't know about F as much, but if we didn't have it as part of the contract? And then, C would, the, what is it, transfer overlay rules would then, E rules, be the contract, part of the contract?
That would be true.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Mr. Frank's point, I'm trying to open this up and make this less restrictive now, so that in the next few weeks, whenever this happens, that this is going to be the guiding light. Now, we have to remember, this is being passed on to the council. I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, it is our responsibility to go through the minutia of this document, because I suspect respectfully, the council will not get into it as deeply as we will. No, disrespect, I was in the council, I know all about it. I mean, I don't expect that they will dig into this as deeply as we will, they're trying to facilitate the development of a subdivision. And everyone's trying to make it work, and it's our responsibility, please correct me if I'm wrong, to put the teeth into this, or make it loosey-goosey, so that there is some flexibility. For example, if I may, have we done any soil borings?
With the first phase.
Randomly throughout. There could be, my point here is, there could be ledge, oops, there could be ledge, maybe we can't put 20 feet from the edge of the center of the road, or wherever. You know, maybe, oops, if they go on either side of the ledge, you're either going to blast the ledge, or I don't think you want to blast the ledge, but you're going to move the foundation either forward or backwards for the footings to miss the ledge. So, I'm trying to say here, it doesn't have to be exactly this, it has to be within these parameters, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think that's what we're, that's what...
Thank you.
That's the direction I'm heading, yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Yes.
So, the language here, that's the applicant's request, so we're just trying to address their requirements. So, I think on the, that's why when the street frontage, they made a change, and then we said, well, you meet the standards, so why not just meet the standards? So, that's why we changed, if you remember, C, and now we're coming through and we're seeing D and E, and it seems like the board kind of wants E, minimum front and rear setbacks to meet the ordinance, right, in giving variety. Like, we want, we don't, minimum 20 feet, well, if a lot can, if the house can be closer than 20, like 10 feet or 20 feet, why not give that lot a little bit of flexibility? So, I think if you just, on E, identify that it will meet the development transfers district standards, and then to Jim's point is, then the development transfer standards, it does identify parameters for lots that can be outs greater than 25-foot setback. When you're doing the review, there just can't be so many of them. So, if for whatever reason, there's a wetland or something in the front yard where that lot has to have the house located further than 25 feet, the ordinance allows for that. So, I think when you're going through the review, if you just identify that the front and rear setbacks will meet the development transfer standards, you should be able to address it. Now, I will look to the applicant, because I think the side setback to six feet was requested from them outside the ordinance, just because of the way the lots, and being able to make it more of a neighborhood, but go ahead.
With your permission, Mr. Chairman. So, the side setback, that is important. The six feet was established so that, remember, we have 80, 85-foot wide lots, and we're putting a variety of different sorts of structures in it, so we needed to have those setbacks set at six feet to accommodate a different style of houses and different features of houses in it, and that works really well for what we want to achieve. And I think the transfer of development overlays talks about 10 feet. So, that would take out another eight feet, which is pretty restrictive for us. So, we had put in there six feet. Now, that means that maybe, on some houses, it might be 10 feet on one side and six feet on the other, it might be eight feet on one and eight feet on the other. It just depends on the house on each, and the physical, the physical conditions of each lot. Maybe there's a tree they want to save, so they shift the house over a little bit. So, we set six feet to build in that flexibility. As far as the front goes, Tom, what's the minimum? It's 10 feet, you said?
Correct.
For the front yard? I mean, there's a certain practical distance that you don't get closer to, so if you put a minimum of 10 feet, then if you went with the 10 feet, then that would give the developer an opportunity, depending on where you put garages and front porches, to be a little creative in the design, so that you get that variety down the street line of the layout. So, if you just said 10, you know, then that's the minimum, and I would almost think that when you go to the planning board, there's an opportunity to have conversation about a variety of houses, a variety of front yards.
Yeah.
Kendrick Valentine?
I mean, one of the things I think is important to hear from, you know, somebody that's going to actually build these, is that I have no interest at all in building a bunch of the same home, right? So, you know, we're talking, from a diversification of setback is what we're looking to achieve. So, I think where it says, you know, here, an E, a minimum, front and rear setbacks at 10, 20 feet, if we change that to 10, right, and then once we get into the planning board, we can set standards of that, look, we don't want all of them at 12 feet, and I'm going to say, yeah, great, great, I don't want all of them at 12 feet either, and part of the six feet, 10 feet is all, or six feet and 10 feet, is that we want to build diversification of houses, but, you know, some single stories that are longer and wider, right, and some, you know, a couple two units here and there, and some capes, and some colonials, and some different styles of housing. I mean, that's what, you know, when you think about village feel, to your point, Jim, there's a diversification of types and styles of houses, and that's what our desire is to build, because guess what? People don't want 100 of the same exact house, and neither do we want to build that, and we don't think that would be a good fit for this community in Gorham. And so, I think, you know, for you to hear, that's not at all, you know, when you think, when I think about cookie cutter, it makes me want to, you know, pull over a wastebasket and puke in it, right? Like, it's not our, it's not our desire, it's not what we want to do, it's not what we're going to do. So, just wanted to, you know, at least say that, so I think our desire here is to build a diversification of style of housing.
Thank you.
Good.
Just so you know, if you do go to the minimum front, it's 15 feet for development transfer, I'm sorry, not 10, 15. So, if you wanted to mimic the development transfer and just make E similar to that, you would strike out 15 and put, I mean, strike out 20 and put 15.
Does the board want to go to 10 or 15, or keep it 20? Who wants to go to 10?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Tom, did you say, if we go to the development transfer overlay district, it's 15? It's 15, and that we would strike the language if we don't want 20, and Mr. Chairman, are you suggesting we come up with a figuring out instead of?
We could go to a minimum of 10. We could mimic the development transfer overlay, or we could keep 20. I kind of like the, I like the 10 or 15.
Me personally, I grew up in the big city, the closer the house is to the traffic, the more noise there is in the house. I heard Mrs. Marchand, I believe, never opens a window since last century, because of street traffic and dirt, et cetera, et cetera. So, maybe it's beneficial that it stays at 20?
Remember, this is the minimum. We're talking minimum.
Right, right, yeah, minimum. So, you want to stay at 20?
But I'm flexible.
What does the rest of the board think?
Get rid of E.
You want to get rid of it?
Yeah, that's what I said 10 minutes ago.
So, Mike, you mean by getting rid of it, it would just be the development transfer overlay requirement?
Well, yeah, that would, it would, in effect, default to C.
That's kind of what I would like, myself.
To strike E completely from the contract.
I like 15, yeah.
Now, strike...
If you strike it, it becomes 15.
Yes.
Okay.
So, I'm saying I like 15.
Oh, okay.
Right?
But are you agreeing with me? That we get rid of E?
Want to strike it.
Yeah, get rid of it.
If you strike it, do you know what it becomes, the minimum?
It's whatever the development transfer is.
Which is 15.
Okay.
Right? Okay, so I do agree with you, I want 15. So, you want to strike it?
That's what I'm advocating.
What does everyone else want? Strike?
My suggestion is, if you kept it at 10, it would allow more flexibility, you could put a porch on a house, it would be within the setback.
Sure.
Often, you can get a variance for a porch within a setback, so if you kept it at 10, it's more likely the houses will be set at 15, but an open porch, for instance, could be added to the front of it.
So, 10 feet, raise your hand. 15, or strike it. Okay, strike it. All right, next item. Did you want to continue, Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I just want to look up at letter C. We're all in accordance with the change there, show meet the requirements of the development transfer overlay, just that's the new blue text. We're all in agreement with that, I believe the town attorney helped us with that. Same likewise with five E in blue text, unless the planning board determines that a different parking ratio is supported in a foreign phase, except that the required ratio shall only exceed two spaces per dwelling. We're all in agreement with that text, that's the change.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the following page, page 11, at the very, very top, the second line, as the towns, the town of Gorham's, again, throw in 2016 comprehensive plan, that year for that. I believe the last bulleted item is highlighted blue text, I think we're all in agreement with that, because we do not want to say, according to the town attorney, over 55, there's some other little language that protects everybody. That language is correct as it's written? Is that, I'm looking at the town attorney, is that, it was copied correctly?
Yes, actually, I think they cut and pasted what I sent to them, so it's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, if I may, please, on page 12 or 14.
Hey, excuse me, since we're on page 11, I just really want to just ask about the language on, let's see, it's the fourth bullet point on 11, and it's the, about the traffic calming solutions, the property owner will propose traffic calming solutions. Okay, is that tough enough language? I mean, we've heard so much feedback about traffic through and to reduce, cut through traffic. So, what we're asking, what it states here is, they will propose, and I'm just pausing on that word. Is that strong enough? You know, they're going to bring it in, propose, I guess I'm saying this, or will include, or some stronger language in the word propose. Just a question.
Good question. Yes, Jim?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy with saying that the owner will propose. Puts a burden on them, do a little bit more homework, get your experts to offer some ideas, and then we play tennis back and forth, perhaps. I would propose that they would offer...
Sure. Yeah, all right. So, proposing traffic calming solutions, that means, you're looking for an engineered solution, is that, that's what you're...
That's correct, I'm expecting the professionals.
That's what you read into that.
That's the way I read it.
Okay. I read as, yeah, you know. We'll put some yield signs, you know. I guess I'm looking at a little more...
Yes, yes.
I'd like some teeth in it.
Talking with the town attorney, we could add, to be reviewed and approved by the planning board and implemented by the developer, that's a recommendation from the town attorney.
Love it.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yep.
Yes. Russell?
Yeah, I agree with Tom said, I was originally thinking that, yeah, propose, yeah, because, well, this is what we would like to do, but then it has to be in conformance with the town laws regarding, you know, radiuses and stuff like that. So, yes, I'm fine with proposing, because, again, it'll become under real scrutiny when the actual design plan comes before us. Because, again, it'll become under real scrutiny when the actual design plan comes before us.
Okay.
So I propose, so the developer comes in and proposes the town do it, you know, that's what I want to avoid.
That's why the town attorney just said, and implemented by the developer.
Well done.
I should note that, to the extent that any traffic calming measures are proposed in existing town roads, they do have to be approved by the town council, and they have to be authorized by the town council. They can still be implemented by the developer, but the town council has to authorize those.
Could you speak into the microphone, please? I couldn't hear anything.
Sorry, I thought I was speaking into the microphone. If any traffic calming measures are proposed for existing town roads, those do have to be approved by the town council, even if it's going to be done at the developer's expense. The town council has to authorize any work that's done in an existing town road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From previous experience, the developer needs to understand that the town is under no obligation whatsoever to accept a road. You may have heard, Mr. McCullough, you are well aware of this, even if it is built to superhighway 747 standards, Mr. Poirier, please confirm this to everybody in this room and perhaps those on the audience and TV, the town is under no obligation to accept a road.
Correct. So any road that's designed to the town road standard, that's to be offered, there's no requirement from the town council to accept that road. So it's at the obligation or at the will of the town council at the time, whether to accept roads for street, public street acceptance. Correct.
So, does that have bearing on the wording of this item?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I think really, it just has identification for the planning board that if there are traffic calming measures that are being proposed for roads that are already town roads, like Bramblewood, Robey.
Oh, okay, yes.
That are going to need traffic or are proposed to be traffic calming, before those can be implemented, there needs to be a step to the town council. The ones being designed to public road standards, that's at the whim of the developer to make those traffic calming improvements at, at the discretion of the planning board, it's the current public roads that, that extra obligation needs to meet.
But I, I think the important thing is the wording that you added, is that it's to be implemented by the developer, because, you know, it may be that the perfect traffic calming solution is not within these streets.
Correct.
It's, it's offsite.
Yeah.
And that would be on the developer's nickel.
Correct.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, Jim?
Anyone else on 11? I'm ready to move on to 12.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in the middle of 12, the large paragraph, the above stated restrictions, provisions, and conditions, et cetera, et cetera, we go down about the sixth, the seventh line, it says, replace the corresponding uses and dimensional requirements of the existing urban commercial zone. Is that an error?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Jim, where?
It's about the middle right here, Mr. Frank.
Oh, I got it now, thank you. Yep.
We're referencing the wrong zone there.
It says R, correct?
U R and U R expansion.
I think that if you, I know it's a little confusing, it certainly could be rewarded since you're changing other things, but it does say, replace the corresponding uses and dimensional requirements, and it does say earlier in the agreement that it is, that it's still subject to the underlying zoning districts unless modified herein. So when it says corresponding, it means only those things that are set forth here that are different. But if you find that to be confusing and you'd like clearer language on that, that certainly can be done.
I find it confusing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I think you wouldn't have raised it if you didn't, so.
Can I ask for guidance from the town attorney or, or others on?
It could say to replace the specified uses and dimensional requirements of the existing urban commercial zone.
It's actually urban residential and urban residential expansion zone.
Yeah, urban and residential, urban, yeah.
It needs to be completely rewritten.
It does.
Is what, is what you're saying.
Last but not least, maybe, pages 13 and 14 each, we're referencing the year of 2023, I think it's all going to be 2024 by now. Hopefully not 2025.
The, the Sebago Technics Plan, I think it still says 2020.
2021.
2022. Not a big deal, but.
Tells you how long we've been at it. We'll fix that.
Yeah, that's all right.
Going backwards to page 12, the penultimate paragraph, they talk about, it says, the state law, including blah, 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 and the code. But which code are we talking about here?
Steve, what was, what was the question?
There was reference to code and in item nine on page 12.
Yes, I can answer that. If you flip back to page eight, the second where, or the first full whereas, references the Gorham Land Use and Development Code, and then states that after that it will be called the code. So that's what it's talking about.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's all over the place. Land use and development code, thank you, that's, that's the clarity I was looking for. Thank you. Thank you, David.
Anything else?
I, to move these things along, I would propose a motion, but I don't believe this is ready as it is. Do we want to see edits before this goes, before the council?
You actually are going to have to continue the public hearing because you're making change, substantive changes to provisions, so you will need to continue this. I don't think you need to do new notice because you are going to, because you're going to keep the public hearing open, and so people know about that. Something could be put on the website about it, but I would suggest that you continue it and instruct staff to bring you back the proposed changes that have been discussed tonight, and then members of the public will be allowed to, to talk about those proposed changes, as will the applicant.
Thank you.
I still have, I want to pose some questions to the, to the group, just on two issues relating to this, because I, I keep going back to the page three, and they got, you know, what came from the council that started this whole thing. And I think there was someone here earlier this evening who spoke to it, and it's been spoken about earlier, public input, right in the middle there is the development will protect the character of existing neighborhoods, protect existing tree canopy, you know, so on. When I go into the whereas, the whereas's, that's proper, and into the, the text of the contract, I don't necessarily find that statement. And I think it's a really powerful statement, it's one we've heard so much from in the public, I kind of like to see it in the document. You know, if you look at, and the, the whereas's, because that's where I would expect it to find it, you know, they, there's, it gets close, but those actual words never exist. I think if you look on page eight, the third one from the bottom, maybe, third, fourth from the bottom, but I'd ask, I'm kind of asking the group, how do you feel about that? You know, should we, should that, we recommend that language be added somewhere in here? Because it did come from the council.
You're saying it should go in the contract zone language?
Yeah, I would expect it, because it's really powerful, it's some powerful guidance language that came from the council that helped create this, and yet, and it's something we've heard a lot about from the public, should that be in the contract itself?
I'm so, I'm looking at section F on page 11, that's where there's a whole bunch of additional requirements for the development.
Yeah.
And one of them is, the property owner will avoid a grid pattern of streets to utilize a more neighborhood approach or reflects the character of abiding neighborhoods. I mean, you, the planning board could look to amend that a little bit, to add some language that you're looking for, or we could add a whole new one underneath F that kind of gets to the requirement regarding preserving existing trees. One, one thing for the planning board to consider, so under the development transfer standards, there's a requirement for two street trees for every 50 feet of road, those are new trees, maybe offering the developer a, for every tree you save, there's one less for you plant, or some kind of incentives that you, it's kind of like a trading program that says if you preserve a tree, it's worth three street trees, or some, some kind of negotiation, I'm not quite sure about.
Yeah. You know, Tom, to be honest with you, I'm a little more realistic when it comes to the trees.
Yeah.
Because I, you know, with small lots, it's hard to preserve the trees. I mean, they are, to the gentleman's point earlier, they are preserving a large piece of land, it's very hard to build the homes without taking the trees down. And the trees, you know, and also the trees belong to the landowner, they're merchantable property, they have value, and it could be part of the equation. I always look, it could be, well, I started my career as a forester, so I look at a tree, I put you with value, and it might be figured in the equation of, you know, some of the cash to be used for the project. So I'm really looking at this statement of the char, come back to the words, the character of the existing neighborhoods, because that's kind of, that's the language I really would like to see, really, in the document.
Would you consider language that says to preserve existing trees along the perimeter of the site to better break up those developments?
Sure, love it, yeah.
But the trees aren't the issue you really want to address.
No, the tree, I'm talking about the character of the.
The character of the neighborhood.
That was brought out so much.
Yeah.
And that's the part I think I'd recommend we build in to make it, not mix it in with something else.
Thanks again, once again, Mr. Chairman. I'm referring to Mrs. Robey's page three, referenced as bullet item six. There's some interesting language in this that I find we may be able to use, I'm not sure if it needs to be put into this contract document or not, maybe it does. For example, the suggestion is neighborhoods currently impacted will not be allowed on Saturday or Sunday and cannot commence before 7:30 a.m., nor persist beyond 5:00 p.m. In the summertime, when the weather's good, you got to be banging nails, you got to be building, building, building. I would not personally support a 5:00 p.m. cutoff in the summertime, maybe when school's out, in between that two and a half month period. I'm not trying to ignore the requests of this document, I, I think it has some validity, but I'm not sure if we need to incorporate it in this contract zone as a guideline for future reference, or when they're putting sill plates down and we can say, you can't be banging nails after 5:00.
So I will try to go off memory. So the town of Gorham in the Land Use and Development Code identifies a time period that construction noises and traffic are exempt from the noise standard. So, and I, I can't remember, it's either 6:00 a.m. or 7:00 p.m., I mean, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., it's either 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., or 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. During those times, traffic is exempt from the noise ordinance. If you are between 7:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., you are not exempt. So that means you have to meet the noise standard. So that means, trust me, we, we get calls, if the dump trucks are starting up too early, or the dozers are starting up too early, before that time period, neighbors will call, and the code office will go down there and say, you cannot be starting before a certain time.
So we already covered then, and we do not need to add something like this?
It's in the land use code, so as long as you're comfortable, we can pull up the standard and I can read it.
Nope, nope, I'm good with that, thank you.
Do we have anything else? Well, we're back to David's question about. Yeah. Protecting character of neighborhoods.
What we could do is basically add a provision that says, we just talked to Carol, that says the proposed, the property owner will avoid a grid pattern of streets to utilize a more neighborhood approach that reflects the neighborhood, the character of the budding neighborhood, we could add that language from, oh, I gotta pull it up here. of existing neighborhoods, protect existing tree canopy to the greatest extent practical as part of that, that language.
That would be fine.
Add that language in. So the property owner will avoid a grid pattern, utilize a more neighborhood approach that reflects the character of the bidding, abiding neighborhoods, and will protect existing tree canopy to the greatest extent practical.
That works for me.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Do we want to make any more changes, or do we want to move on to the, push this to the next, next month?
So the process is the hearings left open, changes, we'll be right back, we'll see them, and then we allow for more public input, is that it?
That's correct.
I'm ready to move on with that plan. Do we need a motion for that? We do.
Motion to continue.
Does anyone have? Continuance, is that what it is? Yeah. Motion to continue.
Second.
Who, who has the motion?
I'll make the motion to continue.
Okay. Second, all in favor? Looks like all seven are in favor. What if we didn't vote for that? Do we have an option?
Yeah, am I going to carry this to home?
She just leave it all here.
We have motion to recycle.
Forester, huh? That's your favorite chainsaw.
We move on to item two, which is a discussion, sketch plan, Gen X Capital Partners LLC, Luxury Motor Toys, a request for site plan approval for 40 condominium garage units with associated clubhouse zoned, what is that, OCI, map 34, lot three, represented by John Witten Jr., P.E., with Haley Ward.
Old Canal Industrial.
Old Canal Industrial, yeah.
That's it?
We will, I guess, start, we'll hear from the applicant first.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you said, I'm John Witten Jr., a civil engineer with Haley Ward, representing the project tonight, which is Luxury Motor Toys Garage Condominium. Mark McClure of the ownership group is here as well, if you have questions directly of him. Thanks for having us, it was a very short wait at the back of the room. So the ownership group is looking at, has a purchase and sale agreement on this lot out on Old Canal Road, Old Canal Way, excuse me. This site is probably familiar to most of you, I think it's, maybe this is probably the fourth round of site plan approval for this lot in particular, and it was part of overall subdivision developed by the Grundins in the, probably, six years ago, so. This project is to develop, is to propose to develop around 40 garage units on the site. The garage units will be offered for individual sale, be part of a condominium association. Each unit will have a garage area that would house two to three vehicles, depending on size of the vehicle, and have a, a small kitchen area with a full bathroom, and then a 200-square-foot mezzanine above that, that would be kind of a, almost a living room type space, and the interior could be finished per, per unit, per owner. And there'd be a central clubhouse in the middle with security gates and such to get into the facility. And the clubhouse could be used for more robust gatherings, full kitchen, things like that, hosted by condominium owners themselves. Looking to take advantage of the existing water sewer and gas services that are within Old Canal Way, and also connect to the existing stormwater management system that's been developed for that site. The applicant looks to match or be below the impervious areas and developed areas that are part of the previous permitting of the site under the Site Location Act permits, and be within any compliance with the traffic movement permit of the overall development. So I did bring a few shots from the applicant's website, luxury toys.
Luxury Motor Toys.
Luxurymotortoys.com, where you can look at renderings that they are thinking about. And basically, it's, it's a grouping of, most likely steel buildings, and on the exterior would have a second-story balcony and the garage door, and that's basically the face of the building, and the clubhouse would be, would be a little bit more architecturally featured and have glass. But otherwise, it's pretty straightforward, there's no living arrangements in here, nobody's, you know, these aren't dwellings, it's just a, a, a place for, I guess what you call luxury toys, to have a common space to store them, work on them, and just have fun. So I think that's pretty much it for the permitting side of things. We're looking to start the process with a sketch plan, and then hopefully be in front of you, you know, in the March timeframe for a full application.
The, what's the intent with the clubhouse? You want to speak on that, Mark?
Just an error, if their unit's not big enough, they want to have some friends and family over, or as a congregation, they want to gather over there, but we're not really married to it, we just have it there as an amenity. There's a lot of communities like this down south, Florida, Texas, it's coming up the East Coast, and they have that as an amenity, so we put it in there, but, you know, we're not married to it, just a meeting place for the members.
Is there going to be a common garage type thing?
A common what now?
Garage.
Garage?
Yeah.
They're all going to be the same, 1,000 square feet, 250 mezzanine level, 27 by 37, 18-foot doors, 14 feet wide, 27, 25 feet tall, they're all going to be the same.
So the clubhouse won't be a common garage for people to work on their vehicles?
Yes, exactly right, just for the, the unit members, it won't be open to the public. Yep.
So, kind of just background, so people would store their vehicle here?
Yeah, it's, it's really popular down, you know, south, and they come up the East Coast, and pretty much a place for motor enthusiasts to, you know, garage spaces at a premium now, people's homes and so forth, parking space, and, so to put their boat in there, especially in Maine, year-round, the weather's horrible up here in the wintertime, place to put their boat, place to put their car, you know, just place to have to store it and hang out with their friends, and, you know, it's really for motor enthusiasts, people that love their vehicles, like to play, tinker with them and stuff like that, so, and just extra storage space, so. We hate to call it man cave, but they call it like the man cave, but.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, that's, that's what everyone calls them now, when they, and they sell out, they're, they're pretty popular, you know, when they come online, people snag them up pretty quick, and they really take care of them, you know, they take care of their cars, take care of their vehicles, they really take care of the units and the community itself, so.
Go ahead.
Oh, you know, and just fascinating, actually, really interesting project. So, you know, now, do people put car lifts in these?
Do what now?
Do, do your.
Yeah, car lifts.
Put a car lift in?
No, we're not going to allow that, good question.
No.
This is more of a storage space, we don't have people, people going in there and, you know, taking out engines and oil and all of that sort of stuff.
So no overhead cranes?
None of that stuff, no, 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 it's strictly a storage space, they can wash their car in there if they want, but yeah, there'll be no, none of that, it's strictly storage, no pollutants or any of that will be allowed in the condo docks.
Ah, you lost me.
So I think one of the questions that come up in the notes was to, was to ask you
about oil collection, and any, well, if you're going to be washing the car as well, collection of wastewater.
Yeah, you're going to have a floor drain in each one?
There will be floor drain in there, but just, just for the reason being they're going to be washing and so forth, but back to the point of, we're going to be really stringent on changing oil, and, I mean, as best we can, in the condo docks, but as far as stormwater and so forth, I defer the question to, to John on that, but yeah, I mean, there will be drainage system in there, yep. Is that, I mean, that's.
Yeah, it's, the, the fire department brought this up in our staff meeting, is that, and the sewer department, that we have to find a way for those floor drains to be isolated from the general sewer, and that there's a possibility that we have oil grit separators that need to be pumped out every once in a while. So we, that's one of our bigger issues to tackle design-wise, is how, how are those floor drains going to be connected and facilitated such that we're not, you know, there's just no, no chance of oil or antifreeze or soapy water getting into the wastewater system of the town.
Yes, Jim.
Tom, you may know this better, I didn't think drains were allowed unless they are going to be completely segregated, because you also have flammables.
That's what, as Mr. Witten has identified, we flagged that in the staff meeting, saying, "We're going to have to check with the water district to see exactly what you'd be allowed to connect into the sewer system, what you won't." We don't, I don't believe so, but we're checking to make sure, whatever they're going to do is going to meet the requirements of the water district for the sewer.
I'm assuming these units will have to be sprinkled?
Not 100% sure yet, the fire chief was going to look that up after our staff meeting, just to confirm what the sprinkler requirement was going to be, so.
Just because of the.
Hilton car wash.
I expect, I suspect these are high-end vehicles, they're not going to be.
Yeah, no, you're right, they're going to want them sprinkled, yeah.
Boats or, or high-end vehicles.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be their man cave and put their high-end vehicles in there, that they don't want to store at their house, or they want to keep them by the lake or the ocean.
Keep away from their wrecks.
Exactly, exactly.
One thing.
What are you trying to say here?
Not sure how the building, you know, inspectors of the building code would look at these, but, you know, parking garages often, the code would require ventilation, and I'm not sure if you, have you done this kind of project before?
We're using, we have two, well, actually, we're building a 45-inch condo project right now, in common, we're 60% done, we have a big parking, enclosed parking garage there, and yeah, we deal with all the ventilation and so forth, that's one of the biggest components that we're dealing with now, we successfully did it, these will have ventilation systems in it, we'll be using Distefano Associates as our GC, or LaJoy, and, you know, they'll be handling that, but to your point, it will be ventilation system in there.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess, you know, a couple of things you've come across, and the questions were raised here, I guess it comes back to, you said this is a storage, and yet, you know, it's just the assumption is made by many of us that, yeah, you know, these car enthusiasts, they're going to be wanting tinkering on, I think you even used that word, so how do you kind of police that? I mean, you know, I have, you know, I have a, my niece's husband, his idea of a fun Friday night is to get together with his buddies and pull his engine out and clean it, and then put it back in, sick, absolutely sick individual, but, you know, how do you prevent that?
Yep, no, great question, well, two things, when they, when they purchase it, there'll be a strong purchase and sale agreement in there, and then, like we're doing with our condo project, the condo docks will be very clear of things they can and cannot do. You know, if they violate those covenants, or, I assume there'll be penalties, but we'll be pretty clear in the purchase and sale agreement and in the condo docks, the things they can and cannot do. It can't be a garage where they can go and fix people's cars and make it a business, you know, or even on their own car, we're going to be strong proponents against that.
I was, I was interested, looking for a place to keep my antique Mercedes, however, the thing always drips, the stuff.
Well, yeah, we know there'll be dripping, and there'll be some residual antifreeze and so forth, you know, we get that, we just want to deter people from going in there, like you mentioned, you know, doing engine work and draining their oil, and, you know, but, yeah, I mean, there'll be some of that.
Yeah, I would imagine it's the same problem that a car wash has, they got to collect up, there's, there's all kinds of substances that go in the drains, and they've got to be able to separate them and.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I think some comments were made on this draft revision that although Gorm is a very proud community, we're a town, we're not a city, I think those have to be.
Yep.
Maybe do a universal spell check and change that, nice layout, nice, nice preparation.
One item was, did we, I don't know, did anyone ask about the parking?
Oh, yeah.
It was the parking that you were proposing less than the required 49?
Yes, and there's 38 spots, in addition to the two spots that, well, three spots that come with their garage, there's 38 spots around there, I just don't see those spots ever being utilized in, at any one time, maybe, yeah, I just, you know, but there are 38 spots over and above their parking spots.
We've come across this before on self-storage units and.
They can, they can request a waiver, right?
Right.
On that, so you'll want to probably do that.
What's that?
You can request a waiver.
Okay.
For those buyers.
All right, but there are 38 there, but okay.
And that's, and it's, yeah, it's fairly close, I mean, I think we've waived some before, so.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else on this? It's like an interesting project.
Really does. You know, I'm a big fan of sidewalks, something we might want to think about scheduling, when the weather gets a little warmer.
What's a sidewalk?
A sidewalk.
Oh, sidewalk, yeah.
We should do a sidewalk?
I'd be curious, what's on the site now?
It's, it's just undeveloped at this point.
They might have a really nice vehicle they could take us in.
Yeah.
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 And this is, this will be the fourth site plan, hopefully, to be approved for this one site, I'm not sure if you guys, any of you have walked the site previous, so, okay.
Really, it's an industrial, it used to be an industrial subdivision, Old Canal Subdivision Park, so it's really a vacant lot, it's wooded, there's CMP power lines on the other side, so I'm not sure, you can go do a sidewalk, I'm not quite sure there's a whole lot, other than industrial, than a, a utility corridor on the other side, so that's.
You could do a drive-by and see all we need to, probably.
Yeah, it's, basically, across the street from Shaw Road, there's a big shop on Mozier Road.
Yeah, an aerial would, would show you quite a bit, probably, an aerial satellite.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Photographs on the other side, were they indicative of what you're hoping or proposing, that will be pitched roofs, et cetera, et cetera, or is this a?
That's, yes.
Similar to what?
So both GCs are now are putting together, I want to say drawings, but construction drawings, similar to that, yeah, that's, that's the goal, we want to make them attractive, you know, because they've been spending $320,000, $350,000, up to $400,000 for their units, so we want to make them attractive, but also they can take the snow, the rain, so we're going to work through the roofing system, and then the crevices that you see there, there's been some questions that come up with the GCs that we'll work through.
I believe you were here earlier, you heard a lot about the character of the area and things like that, and I'm sure planning will have some, well, I mean, you know, we do with many of these storage facilities, we also have some guidelines, suggestions. Thank you.
Absolutely. Notice you had quotes when you said "character." Yeah, I think, I think that's it, we look forward to the next meeting.
What's that?
We look forward to the next meeting.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you for your patience.
As much as we could.
I'd like to thank my fellow board members for talking me out of that sidewalk.
I want to see the Mercedes.
Yes. That takes us to other business, any other business, I don't have any.
To adjourn.
Second the motion?
Second, all in favor? That's seven to adjourn. Thank you, have a good night. Thank you. Have a good night.